Good evening and welcome to the City of Groton Public Hearing for Monday, April 21st, 2025. Court McHur, please call the roll.
Mayor Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Depot, Counselor Patterson, Counselor Piazza, Counselor Attali, Counselor Sheffield, and Counselor Norris are present.
I will do what I did last year, which is I will read the letter. Dear Members of City Council, as required by Article 6, Section 2A of the Charter, I submit to you the proposed budget for fiscal year 2026, FY 2026. I am submitting a budget which includes an increase of $855,264 in comparison to FY 2025. The proposed budget is a continuation services budget that considers changes in the economic climate. The budget also follows the FY 2025 budget with funding for capital projects. The use of under designated fund balance will be $1.5 million. This will leave a healthy reserve of 24.06 percent, slightly more than FY 2025. Proposed budget would produce an increase of .36 mils to a proposed mil rate of 4.17. The mil rate will be reviewed once we receive a 2024 grant list after the Board of Assessment Appeals actions. The city continues to be fiscally responsible. We will move on to public comment. This is a portion of our meeting where we solicit public comment from the electors of the City of Groton and others qualified to vote concerning the proposed City of Groton FY 2026 budget. Do we have anyone signed up?
Oh, we do. Ms. Deb Patrick.
Okay. What do you want them at the podium?
It's set up for the podium.
Okay. Please go to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and then your comments.
Deborah Patrick, 8 Mellow Avenue. I'm here because I did look over the budgets just a little. I haven't had time to really go over it the way I like to, but I did notice an increase in the city day budget. It was a pretty substantial increase, and I'm curious as to why the increase was so large. And I think more than looking at the numbers tonight, I really just want to address the council and say that your responsibility to those of us who voted, for all of you, is to ask a lot of questions. If you see something in the budget that doesn't look right, ask questions. Challenge it, because there may be things that you could overlook or that you think is just the status quo. And having been here for 22 years, it's never the status quo. You have a responsibility to all of us to challenge what you see. I would ask questions about any large increases that you see for staff. Why? Are there changes in their responsibilities? Are there changes to their hours? What is the expectation of that employee? Are they expected to be here 40 hours a week, which I think pretty much everyone is? And if you don't get the answers, keep asking the questions. I know I've asked questions here and haven't gotten answers, but I'm counting on all of you to get answers that I may not get in the future. So, thank you very much for everything you do. I know that the budget season is very challenging for all of you, and I appreciate the fact that you're all here. Thank you.
Anyone else?
There's no one else.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Okay, hearing none. I will close public comment. Whoops. Oh, okay, never mind. Hearing none, I will close the public comment period, and I will take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
We have a motion, the second, to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, we are adjourned from this meeting. We will then move straight into the Special Committee of the Hall. So, this is the Welcome to the City of Groton Special Committee of the Hall for Monday, April 21st, 2025. Court McHur, please call the roll.
Mayor Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Depot, Counselor Patterson, Counselor Piazza, Counselor Attali, Counselor Sheffield, and Counselor Norris are present.
Okay, thank you. So, new business, the budget presentations, building and zoning will be first. Scott?
And council members, my name is Scott Reagan. I'm the Director of Building and Zoning, here to present the budget for fiscal year '25 and '26. Overall, the budget has been reduced by 4.41 percent over last year's budget. We were able to do that by reducing personal services by $12,000 and operating expenses by another 15 for a total of $27,000. And as far as any highlights this year, right now, as of today, the Building Department But still, you know, a few more months left to get to the end of this fiscal year. Should I go into the Boards and Commissions too, or does that come second?
Yes, go ahead and go into the Boards and Commissions. We'll address them both at the same time.
The Boards and Commissions, overall, the budget, I guess, is down over 41 percent from last year's fiscal budget. I believe most of that is, I think, is due to the Zoning Board of Appeals is why that is there a big change. Other than that, the normal commissions that I have, those numbers pretty much stayed about the same, or they did stay the same.
Correct. Dr. Fios?
So, in the past, going a few years back, all of these commissions were under the Building Department. However, the Zoning Board of Appeals did move over to the Planning Department, so Leslie will be able to speak through the changes in that, but it's just in the same spot in the budget book. But it was just kind of a shift of who controlled that account, so I just wanted to make that clarification.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I just want to correct the record. The amount of money that we've taken in is 470,000 as of today. Sorry. I was at 270, is what I initially said. So, if you have any...
Okay, I'll open the floor for discussion either on the Building Department or on Boards and Commissions. Yes, or Sheffield?
I see there's no need for reserve for vehicles and equipment in this budget, so we're okay. We don't need a reserve, anything like that, because everything's...
Yeah, as of now, because last year they purchased a new vehicle for myself, and then the other vehicles, a 2019, that has roughly 6,000, a little over 6,000 miles on it. So, I believe that's why that line item was taken away.
So, none needed for this coming fiscal year? Because it's been in there for the last couple, so I...
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Depot?
Under contractual services, it looks like the, our current year's budget, we had budgeted $25,000. I'm guessing because the prior year, we used six, over 16,000, but it looks like you're estimating that we're only going to need $7,500 this year, but then we're still, you still, that line item still has $20,000 for the proposed budget. Can you explain why that might be on page 38? At the, under operating expenses? So, we budgeted 25,000?
Yeah, last year was, last year was budgeted at 25,000, and...
Was there something that we expected to spend that on that we didn't, or, because it looks like we only are expecting to spend 7,500 of that budget? But then we're still looking to budget 20 grand for next year? So, is that what falls under contractual services for, I know that previously we had a part-time person, or we had someone helping us review permits at some point? Is that what that line item was for?
So, if you go back his, the last seven years, I think it was, when we, one of our, one of our industrial clients had put a big building up, and there was a lot of permit fees that were coming in, and the time the previous building official did, we did hire somebody internally, but we weren't guaranteed, so we always had an amount in contractual services if we ever needed to go out for assistance with those inspections of that large building. And it slowly dwindled down, and now that that project is complete, this is just back to historical numbers prior to that building being, being built. But that was, if you remember, if you recall, a few years back, that number was significantly higher, and that was planning in case of the fact that we did need an outside contractor to assist with that large building.
And it, and we did reduce it by $5,000 from 25 to 20 for this fiscal year coming.
Right, but I guess my question is if we only spent 7,500 this past year, are we expecting something that would make it higher for the next year, or is there a reason why it's so low this year?
Um, yeah, I, I know in the contractual part of the, the fees are what we pay out to Permit Link. That's where that comes from. It's part of that package. I looked at, in the budget, there was a $2,500 fee that was going to Permit Link that was for some extra storage of data that we weren't taking advantage of, so, you know, we reduced that going forward this year. But other than that, we kept, I mean, kept the number basically, like he said, where it was historically been over the last normal years before they had the big project at EB.
So, it sounds like you're saying we might not even need it to be that high, though? Like, for your department, are you expecting to need, need it to be $20,000?
I mean...
I guess it doesn't make sense to me if we, if we have no reason to expect that we're going to spend anything close to 20 grand on that line item, then why would we have it be 20 grand?
Yeah, I mean, I could take a look at it to, if we need to reduce that, you know, we could take a look at it to see if there's a...
But from year to year, you can have fluctuations in the contractual services budget, right? And what's, what is that based on?
Well, I mean, if there's any, if you need to use the town attorney for anything that, you know, could come up, I would think, and...
So, I know we have recently used the attorneys for more things here that have required reviews by them, but I don't, I'm not, I don't remember if that's why we raised that. Do you remember why we took it to 20? We dropped from 25...
We dropped, yeah, I mean, any, there could be legal costs that, associated with a lawsuit that's not covered by insurance if it's a non-monetary, which we do have one currently ongoing. It could be some inspections, like some review of plans that are outside of our...
A third-party review?
Yeah, some of that, some third-party reviews do get charged, others I don't believe do. But yeah, it would mainly be something from a legal litigation would be your, your normal piece for the contractual.
And we're not going to know that necessarily until it happens, so we just plan for it. Okay?
Like, I guess my, generally, a line item like that has a more specific reason for that much space when we haven't spent that much. So, I just find that a little frustrating that we don't have a more specific reason for that to be $20,000. Are you saying that the, the current, the zoning amendment that is currently in litigation, is that under this budget? That's under planning? So, that wouldn't fall under this contractual services? It would fall under the Planning Departments if we have legal fees for that?
Correct.
Which we probably will in the next year.
Yeah, it'd either fall under there or the Zoning Board of Appeals, depending on...
Okay. Yeah, I, I'm a little bit, uh, struggle to see the reason why would we need it to be 20,000 without a more clear answer of what you would use that for. I feel like usually these types of line items, we have, you know, five or six specific reasons that would fall under it that are potential, not just maybe there's a potential possibly of needing something, we're not sure what, under that line item. It kind of, to me, feels like we're stashing money under that line item in case we need something somewhere else, which is not how, in my mind, how a budget should be built. So, I find that a little frustrating.
Well, that's not how this budget is built. If you have a question on the line item, ask a question about the line item. Don't make accusations toward how we built the budget, please.
Well, there's no specific answer to what this $20,000 is, what the intent of it is for.
Okay.
It's not an accusation. I'm saying, without a clear answer of what the potential, so normally, a department had, says, here's eight things that possibly could fall under this that we're anticipating, like, you know, in the years past, when there's constant big buildings, and in this specific department, we had a very real potential of needing a bunch of money to review all those permits. Every year, when we're looking at the budget, that's the answer, which is, we've got XYZ in the pipeline, so the building official knows that when they start coming down the pipeline, we're going to need this extra money. So, to ask that question and not have an answer that makes, that is specific to this line item and more general, like, maybe we might have something, but we don't have anything planned. It just seems very unspecific.
We will take this as a question, and we'll get back to you. Get back to the council.
Okay. I do want to say I appreciate you keeping your, lowering your budget from last year. I know that that's something that's virtually impossible to do these days with all of the contractual raises that we have in almost every department and, and all of that. So, I do really appreciate, obviously, you put in some work to be able to get that done. So, I really appreciate that. That's all.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Norris?
Yes, thank you, man. Just a quick couple of questions, just for clarification, I guess. So, personnel services were going down approximately $12,000, and that's due to removing a part-time position? Is that correct?
Um, yeah, one of them was a part-time position, and the other one was an overtime line item.
All right, thank you. Next question is, I noticed that you do not have in 006 reserve of vehicle and equipment. You have nothing in the request or proposed in '26, but in previous years, you've been pushing forward $7,000, so I'm wondering what your thought process was there?
Mainly because last year, the, they had bought a new vehicle, the electric vehicle that we have, and then the other, we have two vehicles in our department. The other vehicle is, I believe it's a 2019, which has very limited miles on it. So, we didn't feel the need that we needed to, you know, carry that line item this fiscal year for, for a new vehicle.
And you were, I'm assuming your request of general fund in your financing plan is a direct reflection of the reduce for permits? On page 37?
Yeah, Counselor Norris, on that one, you'll see that the estimated revenue for, for permits, we actually, it's been slowly going down with the, with those less construction that is currently going. So, we did have budgeted in for 25, 550,000, but the projection going forward based on known, it, we dropped it down to the 500 to be more conservative based on known potential permits. So, that's, that is why you see a little bit of a shift.
Fine, thank you. Just two questions. What is the fall of Deputy Depot's question? So, the contract services in actual in '24 and '16, too? Is it possible, in whatever information you're providing, to tell us who were the contract services in fiscal year '24 and cost? And how does that relate to proposed fiscal year '26?
Yes, we can, we can get that information for you.
And then the last question, and I commend you, because it takes a big heart in understanding the financial budget and the mentalities to decrease your budget by 4.1, 4.4 percent. But my question is here, because I think I heard you mention something about a transfer to another department, to another division. Is it possible to tell me what of that 4.1 percent was transferred to another department if that actually happened?
No, so that, well, that comment that I made on that is under the Boards and Commissions section. The zoning Board of Appeals used to fall under the Building Department, but that has now transferred over to the Planning Department, but it's just in the same spot in the budget book, just so that the planner will have the more of the detail if he wanted more questions on the, the Zoning Board of Appeals. So, it was just an oversight of the, of who oversees, who oversees that board?
Can you say that again, please? So, if I was to say to my next door neighbor that a building is going down 4 percent, maybe they would ask me, how? Is it 4 percent or some of it went somewhere else? I guess that's what I'm asking.
No, not, not in the building. The building is strictly the building budget. The change would be in the Boards and Commissions, and it's really not a change, it's just a change of oversight. So, this building budget is the same as it's been. Nothing has shifted to another department.
So, to give you a little more information, the reduction in the, in the, the budget was through personal services, which was the $12,000, and then the other 15,000 came out of the operating expenses, which, I'll list them for you.
Okay, I see, I see it now, actually. I see, I do see it. Thank you. You should have just told me that. Turn over a couple of pages. That was it, man. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay? All right. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
All right, next is, next is Economic Development. It's here. It starts on page 48.
So, as the mayor said, my budget starts on page 48. As you can see, there is a 1.2 percent change in the budget. A few things that I wanted to note, if you flip over to page 50. Personnel expenses is kind of what the pre-populated percentages are, so I wasn't going to go over that in detail, but if we skip down to the operating expenses, in office supplies, you could see that there was a slight decrease in this line item. That is because we did have an additional line item come out of this for utilities and fuel, which is a little bit further down, and also just, we reduced one of the platforms that we were using for the communications, for all the branding work that we were doing. We had wrapped it up last year, so there was a base camp service that we were using that we no, no longer need. So, for this budget moving forward, the office supplies includes software access for constant contact for the newsletter, as well as Blue Dot, and that is the platform that we use for our business outreach with the EDC. Moving down to the vehicle operations, we're keeping that line item at the same amount. This is to pay for the fuel and repairs of the vehicle. The vehicle is in relatively good shape. It is an older vehicle. This past year, I've had to get things replaced, like tire pressure sensors were the biggest expense. So, it is running fine now and all good, but we just have that cushion in there in case of other potential repairs that may need to be done on the older vehicle. Moving down to professional development, you will notice a slight increase in that budget. This includes costs for the International Economic Development Council. It is a training and exam that I have been taking part in for the last couple of years, just for certification for economic development, as well as Connecticut Main Street chaining and a CNU conference that we go to, as well as a few memberships. For materials and supplies, this line item has the largest increase in the budget. It is to really, we're using this funding to conduct more community engagement and outreach for this year. Over the past couple of years, we've had plans about place making, and we had updates in zoning regulations. So, this year, or this next fiscal year moving forward, we really want to start, to start to bridge the gap with the community engagement and start to bring those elements more forward for the community to be more involved in the process, and really start to look at the public realm and what that we could do within that sphere to move initiatives forward. These engagements include things like bike and pet facility improvements, right, and route designations. This is revisiting the Bridge Street neighborhood and building upon the work that the Planning and Zoning Commission has done. This is also looking at an incremental development workshop, which is designed to bring property owners and local developers together to really understand what those zoning regulations kind of mean and how that could impact their lots. We would like to revisit public art. We plan to have an engage and shift workshop for this current fiscal year, but we're unable to kind of get that off the ground. So, we're still have the interested parties, but we just want to move this forward to this current, this upcoming fiscal year. And then we also want to continue the place making activities, such as planters and the addition of sidewalk art. The utility and fuels line item is new for my budget this year. This will uncover the cellphone and the tablet internet that I have for my department. So, then moving down to the grant program, this is staying the same at 10K. We've currently awarded two awards totaling a little bit over 4,000. We have one pending recommendation that will be coming before you guys very soon for '25, and that's leaving roughly about 2,800 left, and I am still working with about five businesses on pending applications. For contractual services, you would see this has the largest decrease in the budget, a reduction of a line item. This year, we would like to have services that cover our TIF district. We want to look more into the use of that. We want to look more into the use of that tool and see what we can do moving forward. Also, this is looking at the Bridge Street Gateway. Um, we have been talking about the bike and ped for quite some time. Um, we've gotten an update from Connecticut DOT on their plans with Bridge Street, so we had to shift our, um, plans. So, our phase one, which is the installation, should be funded from fiscal years, funds from this year, but the request for the next fiscal year's funding is to help with the assessment and removal of that demonstration once completed. Also, the EDC is going to be participating in Connecticut Main Street's Accelerator Program this year. This is a six-month, um, team-building project development, um, initiative that we would like to take part in. Some of the funding will be going towards a grant to help actually, um, implement the project that the team comes up with, and we're trying to match this with a grant from Connecticut Main Streets, um, to help actually fund the project to its fruition. And that's about it for contractual services. I am a Department of One, um, that has not changed, and yes.
Okay. Council Norris, I see you have your hand up. You have the floor?
Yes, I do. Um, so, materials and supplies is going up quite a bit. Is it possible to get a detailed listing, itemizing the cost of that fifteen thousand dollar raise essentially?
Uh, we can give you a breakdown of how we expect that each, what each workshop will cost, and then the sum of the other supplies for the place making.
Correct.
Yeah, I can provide that at another time.
Okay.
And then, can you just roughly, so along with that, is this a one-year request level, or do you foresee this twenty-six thousand dollars being part of your three to five-year forecast?
The, this would be a, a one-year, because a lot of these workshops are things that we planned to do this fiscal year and wouldn't be repeating, or would be, um, reevaluating to think of what the next steps are for next workshops.
Got it, thank you. Then the last question, only because I put it here very well, the twenty-one thousand of contract services, can you tell me what that is again, please?
So, for the contractual services, we have money set aside for, um, services for our TIF district for more advisory services on how to move that tool forward. We also are looking at, um, the phase two of the Bridge Street Gateway, which would be the assessment and removal of the demonstration once completed. And then, for the Economic Develop, Development Commission's participation in the Connecticut Main Street Accelerator, we're looking to match the grant opportunity, um, to complete the project that the group would develop during that process.
Yeah, is it possible to itemize that out for us, please?
Sure.
Anything else, Council Norris?
Um, the grant program, again, I was having difficulty. What is that ten thousand dollars?
The ten thousand dollars, um, is utilized for the minor facade improvement program or for the business softball cost program.
Got it, all right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Council Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. I know you said you were working with, collaborating with DOT in the Gateway Project. So, does the whole bridge thing that they're doing, I know at one time they'll be down on that ramp there, is that affecting it also in kind of pushing things out farther? Does that have a lot to do with it, or just a wee bit, or?
Um, it does have a lot to do with it. Um, originally, we were planning to go up North Street. Um, we are, um, moving away from that direction because of the state's plan and deciding to take it from Bridge Street down, um, Thane Street instead, and so, we'll be discussing those, um, unveiling those plans as we move forward within the next couple of months.
Okay, yeah, because I saw that, um, on the DOT page when they're talking about it, that, you know, they're looking for June and then extending all the way out to November twenty-nine. I'm sure it's just like in little pieces, but, you know, it's a long stretch. I just didn't know, you know, I'm sure you're looking at that too, but just how, you know, what impact that's going to have and how long are we going to have to delay on it and so forth and so on. But I just wanted to clarify on that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, all right, thank you. And then, the next one's Planning Department, and that starts on page forty-four, actually forty-five, actually forty-six. I think it gets into the budget where you guys are there. All right, Leslie?
Good evening. So... There are, starting on page forty-five, the numbers sort of really sort. Obviously, small department, and, um, Personnel Services is pretty close to the same, and most of those, actually, all of those changes are, uh, within that, I think, four or five thousand dollars, um, are either changes that, um, I have no control over, or, um, the one thing that I did carry over was four thousand dollars for attempt on occasion. I had, uh, somebody come in last year who completely refiled and organized our file system, which has never been in, I mean, I inherited it in dreadful condition, so, um, so we're still working on that, but, but the person we had come in really did a remarkable job and was, was worth every penny. As the, um... So, for operating expenses, there is proposed, um, for office supplies fifteen thousand, and that includes all of the organizational material files and hanging files that will go in the recently purchased, um, filing, lateral filing cabinets. We expect, we're hoping that it would be sooner rather than later, but we are expecting that there are going to be a number of large projects that come in, um, as soon as we get past the appeal, um, in the, in the, what is still currently, um, known as the general commercial area zone. So, then continuing with that, uh, professional development can, um, includes at four thousand dollars, that includes professional development for staff and for commissioners, all commi, I oversee eighteen different commissioners, um, and they are required by Connecticut General Statute to have training every, uh, they need to get four credits within every two years, which doesn't sound like a lot, except that their training programs are not offered all that often. Some of them are free of charge, some of them do charge. The, uh, Connecticut, just to give you an example, Connecticut Bar Association, uh, gave an all-day session, um, in March that I had, I notified all of the commissioners about. Many of them did take part in that. We cover the cost of that, uh, to, that, and that runs every two years. The, it also covers the cost of my going to the Congress for New Urbanism, which I go to every year. It's cutting-edge organization that basically follows everything that's going on that's new and that's working, that it, and what's not working. Utilities and fuel, I don't have any fuel costs, um, and so that has come down from three thousand four hundred and twenty-five to six hundred dollars for just the cellphone. So, the sub, the subtotal for all of that is nineteen thousand six hundred. There's a difference in the, in what was asked for and what was, um, and, and what I have stated that I estimate to use by the end of the year under contractual services, and that is due to, it's, um, if you, if you're on the bottom of page forty-six, um, under contractual services, under operating expenses, and that is due to the fact that I had budgeted forty-five thousand dollars last year for a charrette and little over twenty-two thousand for engineering and design for the Upper Thames View Park. Those two projects were put on hold, um, in part because of ARPA and in part because of, um, I just, forty-five thousand dollars was just not enough to do a charrette, and so it's, it's a little bit like saying, you know, here you can buy a car, we'll give you the tires. And so, uh, when I went to the CNU last year, I, um, did talk to a lot of people there who both run charrettes, who participate in charrettes, and we, um, I think actually came up with a, a pretty good interim solution. It's, it's not what I would have preferred, but, um, it is what it, we did the best with what we had, and we hired a renderer, um, who is very skilled at this and understands zoning regulations, and took the proposed zoning regulations and applied them and did some renderings of the Bridge Street Thames, Upper Thames Street area. And if you watched at all the, um, either the applica, the, when the application was submitted, or the informational program that was given to the public in November, um, there were renderings there that will give you an idea, and I think that I may have passed out some of these at a previous meeting, but, um, I did bring just an example of what you can get. Pass that around. The top picture is the existing conditions, and the lower picture is the exact same site, and what could be done and how we could make, um, in this case, Northern Thames Street, really a, a great place, and a place that people want to both be in and buy into. So, um, so that's the reason for the difference in that, in those two, the numbers in those two columns. The other thing is that I also, uh, was assigned several projects that had not been on my plate the year before, um, and that includes the ADA comp, um, Construction and Contract Administration for the, sorry, for the ADA access to Lower Thames Street. That design needs to be looked at again. Um, I've looked at it several times. I also have some experience in this. I also had, um, the Public Works Director look at it, and, um, and Scott Regan from Building, we all agree that the drawings that were done, um, don't show, I, I'm happy to go over this with anybody who wants to look at them individually, but, um, they don't show how you actually would build it. It's, it's very schematic. So, uh, so that is, so I put in for this project a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, to be able to do that, a lot of the projects that I was working on have also been put on hold for a variety of reasons. So, that, those numbers actually went up and then came back down again. We still have the, uh, appeal before the Zoning Board of Appeals that has been going on since I've been coming before you. It's the same case. There have been attempts to mediate, there have been attempts to go before a court and have a judge say, it's been going on long enough, do something, um, and it's not settling. So, I have been paying those costs out as they come in, and as they come in, they're also, I've gotten a better feel for how long this really is going to take, and probably the amount of money that it will cost. So, fortunately, um, I, I prefer to overestimate costs, because I don't like coming in and telling anybody that things are more, but, um, so this seems to be coming down. There will, and it makes sense, at the end of a, a settlement is when all the work, you know, a big chunk of the work gets done, so at, at some point, there still will be, I strongly suspect, a, a bigger number, but, um, it's been sort of trickling in, and I've been able to cover that. The legal cost for the Planning and Zoning Commission appeal, um, that's just started, and, um, there are, the, there's about a, an eleven or twelve month backup in the State of Connecticut Land Use Courts, um, so we are, we're doing everything we can to do, push that through as fast as we can. We got all of the material, thanks to Danny in particular. We got all the material that we could think of that we would need to our attorney for the return of record, um, and we're, we're waiting on the courts at this point. I strongly suspect that that will add to the tax base significantly. If we kept the zoning regulations the way that they now currently are, because it's still the old version, um, we would only be able to have, allow the construction of two dwelling units per parcel in the GC zone. First of all, people don't do zoning regulations per parcel like that. That's very, that's a very odd way to, so, doesn't matter how big it is or how small it is. You have a tiny parcel, you can put two dwelling units on it. If you have a huge parcel, you can put two dwelling on, units on it. So, that's the way it is currently. We know that the demand in this area, both within the, we know nationally, we know within the region, and we certainly know within, um, within the city, that there is a huge demand for housing, um, and we, so the new regulations would allow for a, um, a large increase, um, in the number of dwelling units that could be produced, um, particularly in multifamily or mixed-use buildings, and one of the reasons that I passed that, um, those renderings around is that you can see that when we talk about multifamily housing, we're not just talking about, you know, big block of buildings, um, and the regulations do include certain things that are, that make it look, would make it look similar to what you're looking at in front of you. It doesn't tell you what kind of style or anything, but there are certain things about the form and the massing that will do that. So, the goal is to make it as, as great a place to be as possible, where people really just want to go. Moving on from that, so there is a cost with that appeal, and, um, we'll see how long that takes. I, I suspect that there will be an attempt to drag it out, because as long as there's no building going on there, the major objection to, um, to the regulations by the few people that are involved in that appeal, um, they get to keep the status quo. Another project that, um, was given to me to work on was the Upper Thames View Engineering and Design, um, and that has been put on hold. The, I discussed the rendering, um, and that's based upon the zoning regulations that were proposed. The other thing that's really important is, we really need to have the zoning regulations, the current zoning regulations or the new ones, they both need to be retyped and reformatted. It was an incredible ordeal. There have been so many people's hands at it, so many different formatting. Some of the formatting on it is ancient, and just to give you one example, there were, when I was trying to make the changes that were required and desired by the Commission, there were places where ex, uh, where quotation marks were act- marks were actually elevens that were put into a superscript font in like a point one font size and others where they were regular, other places where it was two apostrophes instead of, it was, it's just a mess. I've had, I sat with, going over some of the changes, I sat with our commissioner and our, the secretary of the commission to go over the changes that were being proposed. And, you know, we all saw, I'd make a change into the document, go to the next page, go back, and the change just evaporated. So I did talk to a professional to ask about what the best way to do this was. And after she was looking at it on a shared screen, she said, look, you've had, you know, there've been too many people with their fingers in this, too many things that have happened, we needed, you really, you need it to be straight typed, no cutting and pasting, no nothing, it needs to be straight typed and reformatted. And I think we all agreed that that was not a great use of my time, so that is in the budget for around nine thousand dollars. And that's it, under contractual services and.
Counselor Norris, I see your hand.
Thank you, Mayor. By the way, off topic real quick, how's the POCD?
The POCD isn't due for another five years.
Oh, okay. Thank you. All right.
But thank you for asking.
Yeah. Ron, quick question, if you can answer this one, I guess it's steady wide. I've noticed in all the departments so far, medical insurance is the same as previous years?
Yeah, we were able to keep that the same, same across the board based on our health insurance fund. We're still, we're self-insured for medical and we've built, we've been able to build that fund up, so we've been able to, for the last two years, we've been able to keep that line at, on hold.
Got it. Thank you. All right. So here's a simple question. If we were to maintain your office supplies and advertising at nine thousand dollars, what would not get done?
It's a great question. There are, there is the remote possibility that I would have to come back and say, I need hanging files in order to keep the files that we have coming in. And I expect that there will be a greater number of larger projects in particular coming in once we get the appeal settled with the zoning regulations. I have talked to developers and property owners from that area, been talking to them since I got here four and a half years ago, and they're all talking to their developers and architects now. So I I expect there's going to be a lot more paper in addition to digital content. Connecticut State statutes requires that Connecticut, that there be at least a paper copy, paper copies kept on file for all land use exchanges.
And you anticipate it now to be six thousand dollars?
Yeah, there's folders, there's labels, there, we may need more, even more filing cabinets. I think we're, we're okay right now, but if we start to get what I do, I think realistically anticipate, do we need it all in the next, you know, five months? No. Do we need it all in the next nine to ten months, assuming that the appeal is settled? That's, it's entirely possible.
Thank you. Now, I remember last year, and I know I'm going to say this wrong, charrette.
Well done.
Did I say that right?
Yes, you did.
Okay. So can you tell me, because we, I think we went over this last year, how much money, and I think it falls in contract services?
Yep.
How much of that one thirty-four eighty-five this fiscal year was allocated for the charrette?
For this current fiscal year, forty-five thousand.
And how much of that forty-five thousand did you use?
Zero.
And why was that?
Because you can't put it like a down payment on a charrette. It's an all or nothing kind of thing. That's why I said, if you're buying a car, you buy the whole car. Even if you're leasing it, you still are buying the whole car. You don't get to buy the tires and then buy the chassis and then, you know, buy the locks on the door and then the steering wheel and.
The reason why I ask is we had this exact same conversation a year ago. So I, I, I'm somewhat reluctant to say, yes, keep carrying forward if all I'm hearing is projects are being delayed, the charrette's are being delayed, because then that tells me it is not that higher priority that we need to budget it.
It's actually not included in the budget for this year.
It is not?
No.
So you took that forty-five thousand out of fiscal year twenty-six request?
Co- correct. It's not in the, I knew the budget was tight. We were asked to keep our budgets as tight as possible. We've done an enormous amount of outreach and gotten a lot of public feedback in various ways. And so we're try, don't get me wrong, I, it's the gold standard. I would love to do it in the next area that we look at within the city, but I think that for the purposes of the general commercial area, I think we have gone beyond that being an incredibly necessary step right now.
So then allow me to ask, if I was to take that one thirty-four and subtract out forty-five thousand dollars, we've not used a calculator here, so I believe that would be around eighty thousand or seventy-nine thousand. So then the next question is, then why such an increase for fiscal year twenty-six?
So there were two things that were taken out of the contractual services for this fiscal year. One was forty-five thousand dollars for the charrette. The other was twenty-two thousand dollars and change for the Upper Thames View Park Engineering and Design to create that, where we took the cost of house down?
Yep.
To do the design work and the, and the engineering work and then ultimately the construction work to create, develop a vision for that park and, and create it. So those are the two things that were taken out of that, which brings it down to sixty-seven thousand dollars and change.
So then what exactly were you adding for a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars?
So there are the ADA compliant, access to the Lower Thames View Park, and there is a city ordinance that requires that all public facilities be ADA accessible.
So is that going on now though, or is that next year?
For twenty, five twenty-six. I'm going to read you a few different projects for, is that what you're?
Okay. Well, I'm just trying to add up in my brain here what is a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars.
Sure, sure. So that project has seventy-five thousand dollars in a design grant. That is not included in the budget. But additionally, there is a hundred and twenty thousand that is in the budget to be able to actually build it. We need somebody who can actually design it, structurally design it. I don't, this isn't the fun artistic part, who can, there are things when you're, when you're designing ADA compliant structures, for instance, you can, you can, your ramp can go at a certain slope and then it has to stop and it has to be flat for five feet with a turning radius and then for a wheelchair and then go another twelve, one and twelve slope. The distance from the sidewalk to the bottom of that property is about roughly thirty feet. So doing the math for that, that's, that's a lot of ramp. So when you had the, you get the ramp, you had the, those flat landing spaces, we need somebody who can take over that, do that project and actually get it done, make sure that it's correct. The drawings that we got for, from BL, and this is before I got here, so it gives you an idea of how long ago it was, shows basically this sort of swoop. You can't do a swoop that's ADA compliant. It by, by definition is not ADA compliant. So we need somebody who knows what they're doing in terms of designing it, making it legal, making it safe. That is the only project that has been left on my plate. Several other projects, including the most recent work for the docks and the Birch Plain Creek, that project, part of that project has been done this past year in terms of the agreements with Groton Estates. And they're in their due diligence period, that'll be over in June, so we should be able to move ahead with that. Then there are a couple of other project, a couple of other parcels just north of that that the mayor and I will need to talk to them and get, you know, see what it will take to be able to use the lower portion of their properties to complete the, we're actually that close to being able to complete having control over property to extend the Birch Plain Creek. I am, it's nice to be able to use the word complete.
That it? Okay. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Okay, I, I'm, I'm gonna follow up a little bit on part of what Counselor Norris asked because when you were explaining the contractual services budget for this year, the forty-five thousand for the charrette and the twenty-two thousand for the engineering of Thames View Park that were budgeted for but then not completed, I think Counselor Norris, to his point, you said partly that was because it was replaced with you working on another project. The, when you explained why we didn't have time to complete, for example, the engineering of Thames View Park, the Upper Thames View, you said partly it was because you had to refocus and work on the ADA compliance of the Lower Thames View, but then now we're saying that's in this next budget year. So I guess I'm confused a little bit on if the, if that project of Lower Thames View, making that ADA compliant, is in the budget for this, for twenty-five, twenty-six. I, then what was the reason that we didn't finish the engineering for Upper Thames View, I guess, is my question?
Okay, I think that I must have misspoken because that's, it wasn't that there was another project that I was working on instead of. The RFPs are all done for that and I have done everything that I can do within my department to move that project forward.
Okay. I guess, so I think we have this conversation every year in this particular budget because your budget is so project-based. But looking at it again, we set aside this money for, you know, these ten projects and then every time we are looking at the budget again, it's, these several projects didn't get done, but now we're looking to increase that line for next year. So I, I find it difficult, and I'm sure I said virtually the same thing last year, to increase a, in line that we never seem to reach that budget for whatever reasons. You know, there's constraints to, you know, we're short a purchasing agent, which complicates every department's projects. I know that, and that causes all of you probably, you know, delays, but I guess I'm looking for a reason why this year will be different. It feels like every year, it's like, oh, but we need to increase the budget again because we have these ten projects and this year's going to be different, we're actually going to do these ten projects. Is, like, I feel like that's every single year for the past handful of years, that's what's come in specifically this line in this department every single year. That's not to like, get it down to rudimentary, I know that's a very basic synopsis because it's, there's more detail than that, but that is how it feels every year is like, we had ten projects, we only did six, but please give us more money because we're going to do fifteen this year. And when we're looking at being fiscally responsible, you know, it's the same thing, obviously a different amount of money from the, the building budget, which is, do we genuinely, are we going to spend this money this year? Or if not, if it's a placeholder for something, there needs to be some sort of explanation because when a resident comes in and says, well, we, we gave your department a hundred and thirty-five thousand last year and you only spent half of it, but now we're going to give you two hundred and twenty thousand and you're promising you're going to spend it, but last year you didn't, the year before you didn't, the year before you didn't, then at what point am I saying to the resident, I don't know, she just said she needed the money, so I just approved it? You know what I'm saying? So I find that difficult without more detailed explanation of what is going to be different this year that this money will get used.
So if I can take a little bit on that. So the plan is to get the RFP for the lower cost. There was a, a switch in, in focus. Originally, it was the upper cost, the lower cost, to kind of get it all. The focus then swift changed to, let's just get, focus on the lower cost of property. So that RFP will be going out in this fiscal year. We do have the grant to pay for that. If it does come in in excess, that twenty-two thousand that was used will be encumbered in the current year if that engineering comes out. Like Leslie said, that we need to reassess what was done in the past. I don't know where those, that engineering cost is going to come in at, but if it is in excess of the grant, we will be able to encumber. Once we do that, that'll lead to the next steps, which will hopefully happen in the next fiscal year. So I, I understand the concern and the question. There is, there has been a delay in getting that RFP out. It is just about ready to go out, so it will be, you should have something coming to Council for approval prior to the end of the fiscal year for that engineering services.
So you're saying the twenty-two thousand, which is not currently in the estimated year-end, might actually get used in this?
Correct. If, when we put that RFP out, we have, I think it was seventy or seventy-five thousand of grant, but if, in theory, if it comes in over that, we will need to use the funds that were earmarked for the upper, we'll reallocate those in order to get this project. Because originally, when we looked at the lower cost of property, the original RFP was just going to get construction documents based off the BL, original drawing. As Leslie mentioned, that after review and further discussion, they felt amongst the group that it was going to be better to have a complete redesign and get away from that. So it potentially will be more than the original scope based on the fact that the scope did kind of change.
Okay. And so are we planning for the Lower Thames View Park for that ADA access and all that to be completed in this next fiscal year, twenty-five, twenty-six? Or is it just the engineering or is it part, a part of the project or do we, what is our expectation for that timeline?
No, our goal is to have the RFP for the ADA compliant piece for that, to, the RFP would go out to get somebody to do everything that needs to be done. That includes- That includes engineered drawings, sometimes called construction drawings, that show how many inches this has to be wide. Okay, so somebody who can do those drawings, also somebody, and it could be a team. It could be, you know, groups that come in together as a team. It doesn't have to be one firm that does it. But it would be somebody who can actually draw it to something that it can be built from, make sure that it's compliant, and then do the construction administration when we also put, will put it out to bid for the construction of it.
Right, so my question is, are we planning to do all of that in the fiscal year '26? Or is that project still going to only be partially complete at the end of this coming fiscal year?
What I can tell you, from the planning perspect, from the planning department's perspective, which is the only area that I have any control over, is that is absolutely my goal. Those RFPs have been submitted. And that is what I'm hoping for, and that's what I've been pushing for.
Okay, so that's planned for in this budget to not only get the RFP, get a contractor, but get that built and completed in this next coming fiscal year?
That's what the 120, there's $120,000 in the budget for exactly that.
Okay. And I think, I know that for economic development provide, is going to provide a breakdown for their contractual services. Can we also have a breakdown in writing for the, your contractual services?
Sure.
So we can see that?
Thank you. Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Piazza?
Not sure if mine are questions or comments, but what I had written down is when you were saying Upper Thames View was on hold based on zoning regulations. No, okay, so I don't have that correct, all right. It appears to me, if I was to shake this snow globe and let it settle, it appears that when you came on board, I'm just wondering, are we going to have glitches in any of these future projects? Because we're looking back, it's only regulations that need to be straight typed. And you had mentioned that it's not good use of your time and money. Who would actually straight type that?
So what I'm looking to do is hire somebody to do that.
Okay. And what...
And we can go through, you know, a temp service that we've used before. I have names for that. That, the number in the budget came from having investigated several different options.
And so in order to have that done, you have an estimate, how much time that would take and person you hire, and you're saying that was approximately $9,000? Did I hear that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Approximately $9,000. Over what kind of stretch of time do you know?
We'd have to work that out.
Okay.
I, you know. I would love to be in the position of being...
Well, I appreciate all the work you're doing, that you're trying to push things through, and I understand it. It just seems there are a lot of glitches. But I also do see that, in the short time I've been on council, that we are revisiting something, it's like, oh, you know, we're going to do this and, you know. I think I just would need a clearer picture of like, I guess I'm not grabbing what's holding us. Like, the whole bike lane and the bridge gateway, I get that because of, you know, other things, but also with the DOT and all that stuff. So we're going to go the other way. I get that, but I'm just trying to, you know, like, so when we get a picture of something like this, you know, any, even a citizen would be like, ooh, ah, and of course, they want it tomorrow, you know? And we all... And I think that's where these hesitancies come and all these questions for the budget, because we look at this and go, wow, you know, that's what it's going to be. And then they don't see any progress in it, you know? Especially if we're speaking to our constituents of Groton City. So I think if we just had something more to chew on, you know, if somebody asked me a question, I could say, well, it's in the planning, but we have a little glitch. If we had something to chew on to say, the glitch is, like, you were talking previously in reference to an appeal. Am I understanding that the appeal for something kind of being hung up, is it for this area, my understanding, that you showed us the picture?
That's a really good question. Thank you for asking that.
Sure.
The, the appeal has put the, okay, so the Planning and Zoning Commission has worked for a year and a half, two years, really, really hard on new zoning regulations for the general commercial zone. They, I will say, they did an amazing job.
Okay.
Those regulations were approved unanimously and they were done the way that they're supposed to be done. There were public hearings, we did more than we were legally required to do. And when those were, once the, once that whole process was done, there's, based on Connecticut general statute, there's a, there is an appeal period for anything that requires public hearing.
Okay.
Maybe other stuff too. When you have that public hearing, then, and then the vote is taken. In our case, the vote was unanimous, was a two-week, yeah, it's a 15-day appeal period from the date that the notice of decision is published in the newspaper. I think I have that right, yes. And so a few days before the end of that appeal period, four residents filed an appeal. That's their legal right. And we now have to go through that process. The fastest way to go through that process is to go through that process.
And that's for this area here?
Yes, and it has...
And that's in reference to building living spaces, shall I say? If that's not, I'm not sure that's not correct word.
Well, what it allows, really, the best way to describe it is to, it's, the zoning regulations are just, are written so that as each building is added to that area, as each land use, land owner builds, it adds a piece of the puzzle that creates public space as well as what the building creates. But it creates public space where people are going to want to be. And that's based upon human dimensions and, you know, how, what do you need for two people to be able to walk abreast on a sidewalk? What do you need for, one of the reasons for, for instance, that Thames Street doesn't get walked very often is because there's no shade, there's no weather cover, except toward the very ends. And so it gets really hot and so most people don't walk it. So when people say they don't see anybody walking it, they're right. They don't see anybody walking it, but they don't see anybody walking it because in the middle of the summer, it's blistering hot. In the middle of the winter, it's freezing cold and there's wind and there's nothing to block it. So there, and I could go on with this one for a long time. There are lots of things that we have put in that will either be required or that can be recommended by the commission for different developments. Those are the things that are going to make that area a really great place to be. Those are the things that are going to make that area a place that people are going to walk around, want to walk about, go from their house further down toward the water, where they're going to feel some levels of both physical comfort. There are going to be places to walk in and out of. It's going to take a little while. But as I said, the fastest way to do it is to keep pushing the process.
So, right, I appreciate all the information. So basically, to put it in a nutshell, we, so we have this appeal, their right for appeal. Do we have, like, about an average time of how long that would take?
Our lawyer tells us...
Like, you have this much time to do this and this much time that we do this and look at it and take a vote on it?
It's in court now, well, it has been filed with Connecticut Superior Court. And that's where it is. Our lawyer tells us that the, the way the Connecticut Superior Court system is set up, that there is a, I think there are two different land use judges. All they hear are land use complaints or issues. And he believes that they are backed up about a year. It's, it's not what we wanted to hear, but better...
So with that said, sorry to interrupt, so with that said, that could be backed up for a year, is any of that hold wait time costing us any money in the budget?
Lawyer's fees, that's, well, lawyer's fees and potentially what we would get in taxes once those buildings were...
Okay, so while it's on hold, that's basically, that's worth in the budget specifically for that, lawyer's fees and what we're paying in taxes and so forth, until it's settled? That's it? Not anything like, well, just in case it gets passed, we'll do that? So that's specifically what's...
Right, I would say even, I mean, because we don't, we haven't been collecting taxes on buildings that aren't there, that's kind of a status.
Right.
So really, the only thing in the budget would be the, is lawyer's fees and waiting...
And that would be underneath the contractual services? Okay, so you're going to break that down anyway, so we'll see that. Okay, perfect. Thank you for all your information.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all right, thank you, Leslie. All right, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Just for the minutes, Counselor Norris left at 7:37. Okay? So my question to the council is, do you need a quick restroom break? Or, okay, how much do you want? Five minutes, okay? And then we'll go into the last meeting of the night.